This is the town's working group. Working group. And so what we did, our last meeting was an internal meeting and we discussed some financial bonding and different issues, but we also set the schedule for the meetings coming up and tried to put them in an understandable way, having, breaking them out with departments based on next year's capital draft plan and then the five-year plan. So tonight, or this afternoon, we have scheduled DPW Engineering and Conservation. We may not get all the way through and that's why we scheduled the next meeting for continuation of these departments if we don't get through all of them. So I do want to say that we're going to end at four today. So whatever we don't get done today, we'll obviously pick up at our next meeting. And I'm going to kick this off to...
I'll start.
Oh, you'll start.
Yeah, I just want to give an update on the big picture first.
Yes, that would be really helpful. So Jared, so we did go over this list last week a bit. We talked a lot about projects, we talked a lot about different things, but Jared put together this summary which he is going to put up on the screen. And I just want to mention that we wanted to make sure these meetings, the rest of these are mostly public meetings so that elected officials could have an opportunity to see these at a later time, either here or, you know, watch it now or watch it at a later time to sort of keep up to date where we are. And I'll hand it off to you, Jared.
And I just want to, for the record, it's not just me. Connie's helping out a lot in this too.
She's hiding in the audience.
So thanks to Connie. And let me, can you, can you guys who are WebEx-ing, can you see that document that I'm sharing?
No.
You see it, Jerry?
I can. Can it be blown up? Can, we can see it, but it's small.
I think so.
Yeah, can it be blown up here?
Can you email the backup?
It's very small.
They have the backup.
They have it, yeah.
You guys have it on email also.
I'm not sure I can blow this up. Do you, do you guys have the hard copies or the, what we emailed to you? That you can pull up?
I have it. I do.
Because, yeah, I'm not, for whatever reason, I'm not able to blow this up on my, on my end of things.
I've never blown it up on my end.
All right, great. Okay. All right, so I wanted to go over, if you look at the first page of the, of what was sent out to you earlier, these numbers have changed especially on, on the town side in From what you saw at the last meeting, we were working to, working with all the departments to get these numbers into, down to a more reasonable level. We still have a little bit of work to do, but I wanted to point out a couple of things about this. Number one, we're still kind of staying with the 13.5 million dollar a year between each Board of Ed and Town. And then the, what we went through last week was the, the presentation and the new analysis that Matt Spurndal did for you guys that weren't here. And that showed a lower level of our ability to bond. It was 35, if my memory serves me correct, 35 million the first two years, 32 the next two, and then 30 for the, the rest of the way out. And that's due to, if you remember, last year was about 37.5 the, each year of the 10 years. And the reason for the drop-off was the predicted increased interest rates and, and actual increased interest rates. So that's limiting us to a certain extent. But I still think, given that we had, we had factored in a little cushion that, you know, I was planning to leave the Board of Ed and the Town side at three, at 13.5 million. And so that, that's still our goal. The one thing though, that's really driving the, the bottom line number, if you go to the very bottom of the page, which is the grand total of all the Board of Ed, Town, and WPCF. You know, WPCA is, is driving this number a lot. And I raised that because we're going to have to come up with a grand financial plan for WPCA, which I think is going to involve really four things. One is probably going to be, you know, just kind of changing the timing of some of these things, some of these projects. Two is going to be an aggressive, aggressive effort to find grants for these projects, whether they be Clean Water Fund or, or federal money. And we've had initial conversations with WPCA about, you know, trying, starting to make the case for our, for our needs for that facility, but not, not just that facility, but more importantly, in the near future for the, the infrastructure around the town. Also, to a certain extent, there would be some use of, of rate payers, the sewer rate payers, and, and revenue from them. So that, that will have to be a part of it too. And then lastly would, I imagine, be some, some money, some Town GO bond funds to fill the gap. So we're going to continue to work our way through during this process and probably beyond to, definitely beyond, to, you know, do whatever we can to get the numbers in WPCA down. I did, I went back and looked at the, you know, last 15, 20 years of W, WPCA. There's been no investment to speak of there. We did, I believe, about 5 million between FY '21 and FY '20, but prior to that, there was really nothing. There were no major capital pro, no major capital programs, capital investments. And so we're kind of, you know, this, this, a lot of this is, is really probably catch-up work that should have been done over the years but wasn't. So that's why these, that's why the numbers there are so big. So I just wanted to give, I just want to give some context for the, you know, the numbers on the first page that you see before we started going into the details of DPW and the others. Somebody started asking a question. Any questions? Yeah?
It's Mark McDermott. Thank you. You told us last week the surplus at the WPCA was 13.3 million after some of the approvals. Actually, I'm sorry, it was at the PUS meeting on Monday night.
Yep.
And how much of that would be applied to any of the...
Yeah, I mean, that, that would be part of it too. That would be part of that too. And I would, I would kind of lump that into the rates of the, of the, that the sewer users pay, because that's really where that money is generated from, its surplus from, from their rate. So that, it'll, it will play into the, into the overall financing plan and will be a part of it. But to date, it's, it's been used for INI, for, for those kinds of projects and, and smaller projects, some smaller design projects. And so it hasn't been a, a huge part, just because it is, I know it's, it sounds like, and it is a lot of money, but it could go like that, you know, that could be used on one large project. So we've been trying to spread it out and use it for things like design, mostly design and, and INI.
Right. How, how long does it, how long did it take to build that kind of surplus? I mean, how, do they run a surplus every year?
Recently, they have been. I would say the bulk of this one has been, has really accrued in the last, I'll say, five years.
And, and why is that?
Because they...
Be overcharging sewer users? I mean, what's...
No, not, not at all. It was, it was part of their plan to be able to use that money specifically for some of the, the, the smaller INI projects and design projects. That, for, and this, this...
So it's a, so it's a, it's a funding mechanism for them, obviously.
Yeah, yeah. And they, you know, they started putting this approach into place even before I got here.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Jared, this is Jim Walsh.
Hi, Jim.
How are you?
I'm great. And you?
Good. With the upcoming projects and the changing some of the numbers here based on what's going to be coming up, would we be able to at one of our meetings get people from WPCF in to talk about what money they have, what projects they have coming? And also I'd like to hear from them, what projects did we put off over the last 20 or something years? Because we were never hearing about that.
They're, they're...
In our facility a number of years ago.
So they're scheduled to come in on December 8th?
And... Okay, great. Thank you.
So we could, yeah, they can definitely go into more detail on that. I don't know if, Bucky, do you have anything that you want to add or say about, about that?
No. I, I've had multiple discussions with the commission. They understand that there are certain things they have to do before they can engage in the larger construction portions, like address the INI issue, which they've put off for a while, and before they can engage in the design of the plant. Because that's what tells you what the volume is going to be, once you mitigate the intrusion and infiltration into the pipelines.
Right. Yeah, and the plant is a portion of it. And then we have the other, you know, sewer pipes that need to get fixed and, which are some of the near-term projects. When you look at the, their schedule, out to like 26, most of that is, is infrastructure, not, not related to the, the facility itself.
Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
So just, and maybe a little of this is, is picking up on Jim Walsh's question, but just, just to level set and try to understand the process better. When we looked at the waterfall last year, actually it wasn't, I think it was in January, you had put before the Board of Finance a full universe of potential projects, knowing that that was above and beyond what we could afford to do. It was $450 million as I recall. But the objective there was to make sure everyone knew what that was.
Right.
And what was, you know, what was ultimately going to be left off the priority list for whatever reason, or what, what projects we were prioritizing among. And I'm trying to understand, so here, it sounds like you've already done some work to narrow the scope of what's going to come before this group. So I wanted to understand that a little bit better. I know, and, and we taught, you were there, Jared. I know the Board of Finance in particular had expressed concern about not knowing what else might be out there. Sort of to Jim's point about WPCA, we never heard about some of this stuff. And now we find that we, you know, maybe weren't doing the right things or, or maybe got behind on large projects for a period of time. So how, how are we going to, is that, are we just going to be addressing that in the discussions with the departments in these meetings? Or what do we have to look at to kind of see, you know, what got narrowed down into what we're looking at here?
Sure. I mean, I would, I would kind of put WPCA in its own category.
Yep.
Because the funding mechanisms are a lot different for them.
But even for the Town and the School, because I know you're trying to get to certain dollar amounts here, but I, I thought, you know, kind of the prioritization was one of the things we'd be, you know, working through, so...
Yep. And so one of the differences that you see here in, in documents that, you know, the most notable, noticeable difference is this is a five-year prospective look. We included the current year and then went five years ahead as we, as we talked about instead of 10 years. But with that said, if you go to the back of it and look at the last two pages, you'll see a list of anything that was, that would have probably fallen in those last five years or so. So these are things that you would have seen on the capital plan during January that were on that, on that list by year, but have been moved off because we're doing, you know, we're specifically looking at the first five years now. And there's, so one of the documents in the last two pages, one of them is the, is for the Town and the other one is WPCA. And I know, you know, Board of Ed has, has their list too, and they can go through that when they come up, when they come before you. So we'll, you know, as we go through these, as we go through these projects, if you, if you want, we can make it so that, you know, one of them is, is a look at, you know, just take a look at what there is in the future, in the out-years, if you want to, if you want to use that, you know, some minutes out of one of the meetings to take a look at that, that list and, you know, see if there's anything that pops or concerns or anything like that. I'll say for, on the Town side of things, for FY '26, that's the number that sticks out most at almost 28 million. A big piece of that is the fill pile, $7 million that we've earmarked for the fill pile, which is our, you know, that's our current estimate of what it's going to take. So that's really causing that, driving that number up a lot.
Right. So what we, what we discussed last time was we try to put this in a organized way based on our knowledge from the departments and urgency of some matters in our internal meetings in, in my administration. But obviously we want, that's what the point of the working group is, is for us to share that, but then also have the entire list of identified projects that we do know about on the back end, on the back sheet there, so that we can have a full discussion and that all the bodies, you know, the two Board of Finance members, two RTM members, anyone who's watching or can watch in the future, understand where we're coming from and have their input as we move forward.
Right.
It's a more collaborative process.
Yeah, no, thank you. That's helpful. And I, I think, you know, as we, just in looking at this process over the last few years, you know, even, even a year out, nothing has come to pass exactly how it was planned, even in the current year frankly.
Right.
Because, you know, other things arise.
Sure.
Which, which displaced planned projects or planned projects weren't ready for some reason. And I think, and I don't know if, if Jim, you know, has a different perspective on what the, the board's concern was, but I, I think it's trying to understand the risks associated with the, the, the things that are in the out-years. So they may have been pushed to the out-years because they're, you know, there are other priorities now, but, you know, the nature of those projects, you know, if, if they might have to move up for whatever reason.
Right.
You know, what does that mean? How do we think about that in terms of, you know, what we're committing to definitively? So...
Right. And just to, you know, level set, right? So in the past, the Town just did a, you know, capital workshop and then that was it. And then the administration chose what projects were going to move forward on the next year, non-recurring and, and capital. And then it was pretty much a free-for-all, whatever was going to happen after that each year. You know, what, what is, and then Jared came to me last year and said, his communications with other CFOs in Towns and other financial people who assist the Town saying, you should have a five-year plan on the, sort of, on the books. You should have a five-year plan. Not that it's set in stone, so, so to speak, but that there is a five-year plan that our Town has. And obviously things change, and that's why we talked about the buffer, you know, having that little buffer in there with things. We talked last meeting about reducing the size of that buffer so we could stay within our guidelines of what we want to bond, but to have some buffer for things that come up. And obviously there will be things that will, you know, have to swap out, even the five-year. So the, the intent is for, to really have our department heads focus solely, mostly on the, the next year, really get into more of a deeper dive. And obviously, any item that goes before the Town bodies is going to have the whole, you know, package and backup and, for any voting item. And none of, none of these items are voting items. This is just, you know, what we thought, like I said, want to have more collaborative process, bring the different boards in to vote on these things earlier on so that people know what's happening, similar to what we did years ago on the Board of Ed with the Facilities Committee, so that people could understand what was coming down the pike, what the Town had, what the Board of Ed had, and so that we weren't all surprised. So if, if, I mean, I want to try to keep us on time and we do have department heads, and we did have a lot of conversation about this stuff at the last meeting, so I'd like to try to turn this over and let Bucky go through his list so we could get some, you know, we could start talking about the projects.
Okay. So I'm assuming we're starting with FY '24?
Twenty-four, yes.
Okay. You know, many of the projects throughout this capital plan are programmatic.
Is this, I don't know if we, was the backup posted? I don't know if we want to...
What's that? Oh, you might, you might, I'll switch the page. How about that? If there, for anybody who's used it.
Go ahead, Bucky.
So a good part of this program is, is programmatic. When we developed the, built Facilities Maintenance Program, the Vehicle Replacement Program and the Paving Program, they offered us a program of spending in order to prudently pursue our expenditures. So for instance, in, in FY '24, you see no expenditure for capital equipment, DPW, snowplows and the like. Why? Because the Board of Finance in '22 authorized three years of purchases. So that's all been done. And quite frankly, it was, in retrospect, prudent because of the supply chain issues we've had. We, we have items that are, that were ordered a year ago that we won't get for another The same is true for the town-wide Facilities Maintenance Program. As we got into this year's $1,900,000, you'll see it in year '23, we became aware of the fact that because of psych, of acquisition issues, supply chain issues, we would not need money in '24. And so we pushed the major expenditure, which is labeled Year Two, in the Facilities Plan to what is Year Three, which is 2025. And we'll see how that all goes, but that's been a challenge throughout. So that's building maintenance and that is vehicle. As far as the paving is concerned, that, that can go on. The only problem with paving is our budgeting has been impacted adversely by an approximate 15% increase from May until today in the cost of asphalt. So you will see that in every one of these years, a number in there for, for paving.
How, Bucky, how much did you say? 50 or 15?
15.
10%.
So in...
Which number should we be looking at? I'm trying to follow your conversation and the schedule. So what should I be following along here?
Okay. In '23, you'll see in capital, 1 million, for townwide facility upgrades, 1,800,000. See that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And under that, you'll see capital equipment, 1,190,000.
Yep.
Okay. So that, 1,800,000 was for the first year, those, those ADA and safety issues that we had to address. And what we've realized is we won't be able to accomplish that in the, in the, we'll be able to accomplish that in the '23, '24 capital seasons. So we did not put the, the next year's capital for building maintenance in '24. And capital equipment was front-loaded so that three years of capital equipment was purchased or green-lighted all at once.
Yep.
So you won't see that in, in this year's '24 budget.
Well, we put it in, we, we put it into '24 based on the, on the plan.
Well, okay.
And that's what we...
Then that, then, then it does tie out.
Yep.
Capital equipment. We moved the building maintenance though to '25.
But again, you know, just like, just like it has the last year, year and a half, the capital equipment has been, we've, you know, we're at the whim of the market and, and supply. And so we, you know, we could get to, because these numbers really reflect what we intend to spend and what, and really, hopefully, to the extent that we can align it with what we intend to issue in bonds, you know, we, we may, we may come to May or June next year and, and decide that there's, we're not going to get any of these vehicles and we will bond less.
So that's all market-driven, right?
Yep.
So what shade, what does it mean if it's shaded?
Those are ARPA.
Got it. Okay.
And one thing, you know, one thing I would note, that's also under a DPW, was the sidewalks for Southport and Stratfield. And we have, we have talked about that. There's been an increase in, in that project.
Four corners.
Right, the four corners in Stratfield, that we will be coming to you with an ask for additional funding from ARPA to fund that project.
Well, to reallocate, yeah, to use some of the surplus ARPA funds to pump in, because those all came in way over the bids.
Right. Doesn't affect this plan at all. It's just...
Right, but that's a separate issue.
Wanted to point that out.
So I think...
So the ARPA, so the sidewalks, which is 850 here, also had, was, was that much ARPA money?
There were a Southport in there too, at Southport and...
Got it. Okay, okay, okay. That's what I was thinking. Okay, got it.
Right.
The Stratfield was like half of it. Okay.
Right.
So I don't know what benefit it would have to, to go through all of the DPW Engineering projects. We're happy to talk about them if you're unsure of what the projects are. For '24...
The non-recurring, Bucky, or the capital?
Either one, you know. What would you, what would you like to talk about? I mean, they've been on, most of these have been on here for a long time. They've been discussed and they're known.
Well, how about I open it up to the group? Does anyone on the group, the working group, have any specific questions on any of those items? The DPW Engineering?
So the roadway capital improvement plan is, what is that?
So last year...
Is that paving?
Yes.
So, but we, okay. So why do we have that in '23?
Because that's this year.
Right, but we're not bonding that this year, right? So...
Right.
Right.
So, okay.
That's proposed.
Right. There's no, it's not showing any bonding.
Yeah, you see the zero at the end too, it says net zero.
Yeah, okay.
What's assumed is, in here is a portion of the ARPA money. What's assumed is, in here, is a portion of the ARPA money, the operating...
Operating budget, yep.
And then, we assume some, some portion of surplus.
Right, I did that, too, when they first did it this way, and just for those, for Jim and for Mark, the way it goes, and it tripped me up, too, the way they, this was laid out in the beginning. So, it says cost, and then if you see the reimbursement, and then you see net. So, if you, it's best to look at the far right column to get a sense of what that cost is.
Yeah, no, I got it. Okay. I guess...
Yeah, thank you. I read the key up top that's highlighted in blue, so I figured it out.
Okay. I just wanted to make note of it.
Yeah, no, I just, I guess, and I knew that that was it. I just wasn't sure why we were, why it was part of this plan, if we were doing it in operating, but I guess we've got the ARPA money. I guess, I mean, I guess my question is, you know, John, what, you know, just big picture from DP, from a DPW perspective, so, like, how would you characterize what you've got here? Is this more, you know, maintenance and normal course? Are there any other potential large projects out here? You know, what, what else could come up that maybe isn't represented?
So, to the best of our knowledge, this is what we're proposing. This is what has to be done. We supplement that, of course, by getting these engineering studies done that are based on empirical data, and so, for instance, the roadway capital improvement plan is what the beta report told us has to be done, and for this year, next year, and the next three years after that, in order to bring our roadways up to a certain level of rigibility. Capital equipment, again, that, that capital of equipment is, was done by our facilities manager, and it was done based on age of equipment and condition of equipment. The other items you could see here are, by and large, reimbursed, don't have a large impact on bonding.
And to what John was saying before about the townwide facility upgrades, we, we are kind of, we're thinking, because of what we're seeing with the upgrades in this first round that are happening, that it's going to be spread across two years. We did that all throughout. We just put everything, so if there was, you know, the first, the first phase is spread out over two years, the second phase is, is spread out over two years, so you'll see an amount there each year for the townwide facility upgrades after '24, but, and that's what that represents, so every, every two years is essentially like a phase as it was laid out in the plan.
Does anyone have any...
I have a question, and...
Go ahead, Mark.
It's, it's, Mark, I have a question for Mr. Hurley. In FY '25, post-road and jug handle construction, that's, that's not the circle, is it, or?
No, it's the area next to the circle. Okay. Just to highlight, Mark, the, when somebody said unexpected or whatever, we, we had some state reps apply for the State Bonding Commission, and they approved two projects, Stratfield Road, RSA, and the post-road and jug handle.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah, so we have the design for that, and we'll get more details later on, but there's grant money coming for those projects.
Right. This is the one from like the circle down like Grassmere, is that?
Oh, it's the, it's the missing piece in between. That's correct.
Yeah, right, okay. Thank you.
Jim, do you have any questions about any of the DPW or engineering projects, either in '24 or that five-year?
I have another question, if he's not ready.
Sure, Mark.
Brenda?
Mm-hmm.
Sorry, I was just, I was having a hard time finding my mute thing, because I'm going between the PDF handout stuff and my, my WebEx, so I apologize.
That's okay.
Do you guys, do you want me to pull down? Do you want me to stop sharing that, as if you guys have it in front of you?
He didn't print it out, yeah. Yeah, you want to take it down?
Do you want me to take that down?
I have mine, I have mine, I have mine printed out, so.
Okay.
Okay. You could take it, you could take it down if you want, Jared. I'm just using the handout that was sent to me on the PDF.
Okay.
Just looking out to '27, Senior Center, $3 million, new construction, total project $21 million. Is, that's more of one of the wish list things, or is that, is that, is that something we would, we would like to do, want to do?
Right, right. If you remember, Mark, I think you were on that capital, that first capital we had, and I said, you know, I'd, I put that on there. I think everybody's eyeballs popped up, and they're like, $20 million! But I, you know, I want to be honest about it, that, you know, over the years, we may, you know, have to invest some, some money along the way, and I, I remember talking about how, you know, I felt a little, to be perfectly frank, embarrassed by our senior center, when, you know, Shelton has a beautiful one, Milford, Westport, you know, all these towns, senior centers look so much better than ours, and obviously, ours is in a location where you can't spend a whole lot because of that floodplain issue, and you can only...
Right.
So, listen, that's, that's up to the town bodies, how we're going to move forward, you know, it depends on what are the other needs of the town, you know, what are the urgencies, things of that nature, but I want to make investments into our senior center as we move along, and it's utilized, you know, it's...
Yeah, I, I'm sorry. It's in '26 and '27, I'm sorry. But, yeah, I agree. I don't know, it's the one in, actually, are we talking about senior center? It's not on the list tonight.
Well, it's really, it's really not a DPW. We could talk about it at another...
Yeah, sorry.
That's okay.
December 1st.
December 1st, it will be talked more about.
We have that on the list for December 1st.
Yeah, no problem. That's, I, I kind of wish we might have, maybe for the next meeting, we highlight the ones in a different color that we're going to be talking about.
We can do that.
That would help. I agree.
And if we had highlighted DPW and engineering and whatever else, conservation, it might have been easier for us to look through it and kind of pick out some things.
Sure.
So, just a suggestion, and I apologize for asking about something we're not talking about.
That's okay.
Yeah, same, and, you know, apologies, too, but especially if, you know, we want the, kind of the public to stay plugged in on this. I mean, I know we've talked about some of these in years past, but I don't know about every, if everyone else has a photographic memory. I don't. It, and we don't have to do it on today's, but it would be good to just, you know, to Mark's point, highlight the ones that we're going to talk about, and maybe just get a brief overview again of what they are, because I certainly don't remember all of them. And I, and I know in the past, you know, when we've had these capital workshops, the idea was that we never took a deep, deep dive into really what was in there. It was a broad overview to kind of look at it and to say, okay, if we were to do these things, here's how it would fit into our, our bonding and our debt service capacity, and then the deep dive would happen when each of those items came up for voting. So, I just say that, because I don't pretend to be familiar with each of these projects, and, you know, at least for me, I think it would be useful to have a, you know, going forward to have a, you know, a brief overview of what they are, how they fit together, if some of them fit together, et cetera.
Jim, do you have anything?
No, I don't. You know, many of these projects we've talked about a number of times, so, not right now.
Okay.
So, just one other thing. So, this, this, if I'm reading this right, this continues to assume that we're going to bond any paving more than $2 million a year?
I think that's what's, that's what's in there now, except for, I did add the second, just because of the way that the numbers were falling and trying to smooth things out, I did add the second tranche of the, or the second half of the ARPA money in FY '25 for, so there's 1.125 that's in there. It's the, it's, again, the 2 million, the same as this year, except for the surplus.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, I know there's some different views on that. I'm, you know, never been a fan of bonding recurring capital, particularly now when we've, you know, in the rate environment that we're in, you know, I feel like that's something we should avoid doing to the extent possible. I know we have catch-up that we talked about, but I just personally don't think it's good practice.
Right, and I know we've had this discussion at length over the years about paving and, you know, the back and forth about, you know, some of these projects last 25 to 30 years because they're more in-depth paving projects, and some are shorter span. And so, you know, it's fine that people have different opinions, but this is, this, the way this is laid out is based on what I, what my, me and my administration think should happen. Obviously, we want to open it up and have conversations about it.
Are we, are we able to get all the paving done that we want to get done? Are we having any supply chain issues there currently, or, I know, Bucky said the price is up 15% for asphalt, but how is our paving program going?
So, a paving program is our most successful program right now, at this point. We have been able to complete, I'm going to say, two-thirds of the program to date. Following up now with the sidewalk portion, and we have...
Two-thirds of what was intended for this fiscal year?
Yes.
Yep.
Yeah. I have it here somewhere. I'm like a one-iron paper hanger, but I, I could tell you exactly what, what we've So, the program, the total program was $4,324,000. That included whatever was residual from last year's operating budget, the money in this year's operating budget, and the ARPA money. Today, we have completed almost $2.8 million, and we have on the boards 1.532 to complete. In addition to that is the sidewalk program, which is, was intended to be another half a million dollars. So...
What does that mean in terms of roads, though? In terms of miles of roads? Because you said the price has gone up.
So, originally, the program was 2.3 miles a road, so we've completed 8.6 miles a road, and we have 3.6 miles remaining.
Say that again? Sorry.
Originally, it was 12.3 total program.
Got it.
Today, we've completed 8.6, and the remaining amount to be completed in this program is 3.6 miles.
For this year.
For this program, yes. This might happen in the spring as part of that. Okay.
And, but we have money, adequate money to finish...
Yes.
The miles of road that were in the plan for this fiscal year.
It, it appears to be that way. We never anticipated the 15% increase in, in the paving costs, and if we're, if we're unable to schedule the remaining 3.6 miles this year because of competition in the marketplace, and we went into next spring, it could be a little dicey. I'm not, I won't kid you on that. Don't know.
When do we stop paving for the year?
Well...
The winter?
Yes. By and large, paving plants will close when there's two inches of frost in the ground. We've paved into January, and we've paved to the end of October. You just don't know. It's all weather-related.
Any other questions on this or any other item?
For me, I just review, I would review this a little further, and if I have any questions, I'll just reach out.
Bucky, do you think there's anything else that you would like to highlight, or do you think maybe even just the '24 stuff specifically?
No, it's, I mean, it's pretty self-explanatory. As I said, we've, we've talked about it before. When we talk about guardrail repairs, that's just an ongoing obligation that we have, and it's largely dictated by the state when they come around and they, they target various areas. All these bridges, they're in various states of disrepair, will have a better knowledge of exactly what they are, what condition they're in, and when those requirements to address them will be. For you to know, the $150,000 in FY '23 for bridge inspection, we've decided to collaborate with Conservation Department and do a comprehensive townwide evaluation of the bridges where it's required that divers go down and inspect the underwater portions of the bridges, go out to every tide gate, to every flap valve, everything we have, because there's a, there's a dichotomy in the maintenance of the, all of these structures. Half of them are maintained by DPW, and half of them are maintained by conservation. So, we've decided to collaborate on this study, and what the study will yield will be a condition study. It will give us another five- or 10-year plan that we can, we can intelligently schedule this work to happen, and it will also provide us with some maintenance vision, intervals of maintenance, and the like. So, we'll have a professional generate this plan for us. We haven't selected the consultant yet, but that is our goal, and hopefully, maybe over the winter into the spring, we'll have something that's, that's more empirically driven.
That's helpful.
Do you want to...
Yeah, I'm sorry, Brenda.
Sure.
I just have another question.
No, right, that's good. Don't say you're sorry. I'm glad. Ask.
Jared, you pointed out FY '26, we bump up to 20, almost 28 million in the town, and you said fill pile. I just want to differentiate. Fill pile, when you say fill pile, you mean the, the actual fill pile? I'm looking at FY '23, I'm looking at remediation for town, Penn Field and various, so I just want to differentiate, there's two different items here that we're talking about. We're talking about remediating facilities that have fill pile soil in there, and then we're talking about the fill pile itself, right?
That's right. In '26, or, is the fill pile itself, that's something that...
Right.
I'm staring at Tom Bremer, and that is in the works and will probably be the last piece of the puzzle when it comes to any of the, any of the remediation due to the fill pile scandal.
And, and just...
And we have...
But that's a million now?
But that's 7 million now? Just to be clear, that, that's, we sort of put, there's some money put aside and intended to be put aside, right, for the basket of items that are related to that, including Penn, so Penfield remediation, Penfield construction, fill pile remediation, remediation of the other sites. And the 7 million is what you're estimating at this point is not going to be covered by the money we've put aside thus far.
Exactly.
Right.
Yep.
So, so Mark, this assumes also then that, you know, by the time you get to that year, we wouldn't have put any
We're not going to have any money.
We wouldn't put anything further aside. So, we wouldn't put aside any further surplus this year, for example, or the following year. So, that 7 million could, you know, to the extent we continue to do what we've been doing, which is devoting some level of surplus to that issue, that, you know, could change, right?
Correct. Yep.
Yep, yep. I understand, but I'm looking at, you have 7 million put away and we're going to spend 8 million on Penfield and various, right?
Yes.
8 million on Penfield construction.
So, you're already short a million. So, I mean, by the time we get to the fill pile in '26, unless we have some big surplus years, you're not going to have any money left from that account, I would assume.
Right, assuming that there's no surplus that gets set aside between now and then, then, you know, that's kind of the last reason, you know, bonding is where we would go to pay for that. So, if there's nothing else or, you know, any, if there's no other source, then yeah, I'm assuming that it's going to get paid for through bonding.
Does this remediation on various cover what's left to do?
That's the, that's the current estimate of, yes, of what's left to be done
What's left?
on the, the various sites throughout the town.
Okay, because I know that, we're not talking about Parks and Rec, but you got this turf field in '24, I believe, is that the South Pine Creek facility?
Well, I just put it, I just wanted to put it in there, Mark, as a placeholder for Anthony to talk about when they get to that area, because I know it's a hot button issue and I know the Athletic Foundation Group wants to have an opportunity to talk about ideas for a public-private partnership. I don't know exactly where they're, you know, but I just wanted to put it in there.
I mean, I know Brenda, it's one of your concerns and it's one of mine, but we have no idea what somebody that field, the fields currently, right?
That's true.
We don't know what remediation that could require, just like the Gould Manor Fields. We had to spend more money on that, so I just, okay. It's a lot of stuff.
Yeah, it is a lot of stuff, but I did want to just, you know, benchmark it so that, you know, the residents and the athletic groups who do care about us know that we have it on our radar, but obviously, this is a town decision and we're going to have to have some in-depth conversations about how we move forward.
I mean, we haven't bored any holes down there, have we?
Not that I'm aware of.
Right. I mean, if we have a remediation bill down there, I mean, 3 million dollars, I mean, are we even going to, you know, that brings this field to 7 million dollars if we even approve it?
Well, I think the conversation really right now should be just more geared toward, you know, what is the town going to be able to afford? What are our priorities?
Yeah.
And what would the public-private partnership look like regardless of what field it is and how that might be, you know? And obviously, we could talk about that bit more in-depth at the Park and Rec presentation.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm just concerned about the remediation numbers and what that could, what that site could bring, play on the table here.
Yep. Is there any DPW or engineering questions either on '24 or any of the out-years or even on the supplementalist?
So that, so the, any of the remediation is not DPW you're trying to clarify, right? We're going to discuss
Well, we categorize it as town.
Yeah, I guess my big question on that and all of that is how we came up with this timing? Like, why do we assume that fiscal '26 is when we are going to, when this money is going to hit for the BRM? Like, where do we stand in terms of regulatory, et cetera?
I mean, Bremer could speak more, but we're not expecting them to, you know, there's, this is a long process and they've been back and forth. Deep, Connecticut Deep has had extraordinary turnover in their department, a lot of retirements, as have a lot of state departments, but Deep especially. So, there's a lot of people coming in who are new and need to learn and walk it and then they keep requiring more testing and more testing and they want some more testing and then they want another kind of test and, you know, so we're kind of spitballing based on Bremer's, you know, non-stop he dreams about and talks about and Bucky's talking about this stuff all the time. They think that's probably '26.
So then
That it would, hopefully, they'll say EPA and Deep, all right, here's what we want you to do.
But then I guess, why, why do we assume Penfield could happen two years earlier? Isn't it the same regulatory agencies and the same kind of
No, 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 it's different because that's been signed off on, that was tested and they told us what the plan
So, Deep signed off on, under, on the plan for
Well, it's a totally different call again. Yes, they signed off on cleaning under Penfield. However, it's all, it's all based on invoices, they've done a lot of testing there, but from what Bremer explained to me is, you know, as they start, we know exactly to a certain level, but when they start going under, they don't know how deep this stuff is. So, it could, it could expand. They think they know how deep it is, but for right now, just to answer the question, they have signed off on us cleaning underneath the building and what we're trying to do is partner repairing the structure under Penfield at the same time or close to the same time as the remediation. So, it coincides and the timeline is quicker and the building and site is not under construction for longer than hopefully a season. Did I say that briefly and to the point and right accurately?
Generally, yes.
Okay.
And Tom, yeah, can you hear
Go ahead, Tom. You want to come up here, Tom?
I think you need a mic, yeah. Maybe there.
Mr. Bremer?
Does this work? Hopefully, you can all hear me. All right, we're talking about Penfield. So, Penfield is, there are two regulatory agencies, FEMA and Deep. FEMA has signed off on what we're proposing to do under the building by fixing it and that sort of thing.
The foundation.
When we have the final design that we're going to do, that is going to be submitted to FEMA and we will get their sign off before we really do anything on that construction site. As far as the remediation plans, that's under Deep and we are still awaiting for the approval of that. But we're expecting that approval any day and why? Because we're very confident we're going to get the approval in short order because basically what we're proposing is we're going to remove everything. So, it's only when you try to negotiate other things with Deep, short of complete removal, that the negotiation takes a lot more
Which is what we're doing on the BRM situation.
No, we're not doing that on the BRM situation.
No, we're negotiating on the
We're negotiating on the BRM situation because it's so large and it's 100 millions of dollars.
I understand.
Okay, so, so that's where we are with Penfield. We are planning to start something come this November, this November, this Jan, December.
And the packet too, that we, when we did the Penfield presentation
Right.
That's all part of it.
Having all that
Yeah, it's all part of it. And, and the plan is
I just didn't know the approval was imminent because that wasn't
Well, we're not doing anything until approval is done.
Right, but you said any day now, so, okay.
Right, yeah, yeah. We're expecting it any day. That's absolutely true.
So, we put the 8 million aside because we hope, we're thinking it's going to come through and then if FEMA signs off on our plans, then we could hopefully try to get this done.
It's 14 months.
Some semblance of together timing. So, we're not having a beach area that is under construction for two years.
Yeah, the mantra is we're going to lose one summer, we're doing everything we can not to lose two. So, if we start in November, we're very hopeful that we'll be finishing sometime in the early or in the middle of winter of the following year. We won't do it in 12 months, it'll be more 14 or 15 months. So, if we start in November, let's say December, worst case, we're hoping to be done in 14 or 15 months thereafter. So, we're going to lose one, we're going to lose one summer. There's no two ways about it. Now, what that means is it'll be, you can still use the beach and stuff, you just won't be using Penfield Pavilion because that'll all be fenced off and that sort of thing. And it'll be ugly for a while.
And did, I know there was an open question about, in terms of the money, about getting, whether we might be able to sort of re-qualify for the grant that we lost? Do we have any more information on that?
My last conversation with FEMA is I raised that specific question. There were a number of questions that came out of the presentation
Right.
before the boards and that was one of them. And that's been raised with FEMA. And the response is, we'll get back to you on that. And I said, well, I can't have a conversation about this, I've got to have something in writing because I want to be able to go to the boards and say, here's their position, that sort of thing. The people that we're negotiating with in FEMA, their quick answer was, oh, that's not our department, that's the grants department, we'll be happy to raise it, we'll be happy to discuss it with them, with the grants people and we'll get back to you in writing. When I have raised that previously with them, FEMA was very dismissive of it. They were like, forget it, we're not going to do that. But this time, they were much more open to at least having the question raised and they'll be getting back to us in writing. So, so we're well aware, we need an answer to that question. And I, the position I took with them basically is, look, if there's anything we can do from a town perspective to enable us to qualify for that, we're more than willing to consider that, we're more than, we want to do that if we can possibly get that money back. And they're well aware of that. So, so now I'm basically waiting on them to respond in writing.
Right, I mean, obviously, we, we all would want that. I still think regardless of that, listen, to me, that's a home run and a windfall, but regardless, we got to fix this foundation because it's out of compliance. And so, what I said during the Penfield Pavilion presentation was, I want to put that money aside because that's the item, that's the appropriation I will come forward with to the town bodies to ask for, the funding for, so that we could repair the foundation for a number of reasons that I outlined during the meeting. And then, hey, if FEMA says, sure, go ahead, you're in compliance, apply, we'll be right on it.
And then one other thing I'd like to add too, we talked a little bit about how much of the contaminated fill is under the building. We really don't know. We really don't know.
Based on
We've got estimates, we have ideas, people say this, people say that. And I have estimates and I can base it on documents that I've seen, but in all the discussions that we've had with all the people that we hear and all of the documents that I've read, I don't think anybody really knows and we're not going to know until we start digging. And we'll have a very good sense once we dig it because you can see it as, as you dig it, you can almost see what's gray material and what's, what's good material.
But we think it's about five or six.
Well, that's what we think.
But it could be one.
But it could be, it could be three, it could be three feet, it could be seven feet and each foot is, is a big number. So, you know, let's, I just want to be cognizant of that because the estimates are based on what the estimates are based on, but they could be off. Positive and negative.
And I think that the remediation and Penfield presentation that we did with all that information is, was very helpful, I think, for everybody to understand it really well.
Mr. Walsh has his hand raised.
Okay, go ahead, Jim.
I think my question's kind of unanswered and had to deal with some, you know, questions following Laurie's initial question, which I think it's everybody's goal here to get Penfield Pavilion up and running as soon as possible. So, to the extent that we can move that forward, and I know you, based on your explanation, you're all working on that, so my hand went up before we got further into the conversation.
No, thanks, Jim. And we are trying to have a package to put together with some semblance of information on, on the repairing of that foundation. Believe me, I want to get it done sooner than later do.
In terms of the grant money, is there anyone, I know last time, the consultant we used, that didn't work out too well, but I'm just, clearly, there are people that do this. Is it to our benefit to have anyone that might help us, you know?
We have the grants coordinator that we hired.
Yeah, but I mean, maybe somebody that, that has an in at the agency or some, you know
Are you talking about Penfield specifically?
I'm talking about the 4 million FEMA grant that we lost, yeah.
I think the, the short answer is, once we have direction, if there's an opportunity for us to file, I think it would behoove us to find people that are very
Right.
into FEMA and connections with FEMA. So, the short, my short answer would be, yes, absolutely, I think we should hire somebody and have that done. Because it's so much money, we're talking about a lot of money and the cost to hire somebody to help with that, I would think, if we can't do it in-house, I would think is relatively small to the potential upside. But I, but again, I think, I, I think we have to wait until we find out exactly what their position is and if, and as I said earlier, if we have to do things, even if it's, we have a 10% chance, if we have to do other things to do that, I think it's worth it to take that risk and try to get
Well, I think we need to sign off really from FEMA on our proposal first. That's, you know, we got to take this one step at a time.
Yep.
So, we need to sign off, first, you know, first, they were very, very pissed at the time, like, very pissed. And because of all the past and the ignoring and all of that. But I think now they realize that this, you know, it's a new administration, people are taking this very seriously. And so, the, the relationship, I think, has improved to a certain extent, but then we heard a little bit about the Sandy, you know, this was a pot of money from Sandy, the original appeal, and that wouldn't be available to us now because that money's no longer available. But now we're hearing, well, maybe there's a chance. So, I just want to say for the record, I have no idea if we're getting any money back at this point. I, I don't want anybody to think that we have some kind of magic button we're going to push and we're going to get four or 5 million bucks back. I don't know that. I pledged to you that we will do everything within our power. If there is a dime to be had, we will go after it. But at the same time, we still have to fix it. So, we need to sign off from FEMA to say, yeah, that's good, that'll, that'll be compliant, that'll be within our regs, which is very important, right? Regardless, it's important for a number of reasons, we wouldn't have to do it again. And number two, then I think we would have a better chance of applying for something down the road if, if, you know, at any point in stage. And we'll obviously look to, to any assistance we could get with that. How you feeling, Jim?
I feel good.
I know you were sick, so.
Yeah, no, no, I'm great.
Awesome, good.
Thank you for asking that.
Of course. There's been a lot of sickness around. Everybody seems to be sick.
Right on cue.
Yeah, right on cue, I hope I'm right. All right, so, we do have our Conservation Director who's just joined us, Tim Bishop. If you have any questions, I know some of the hot button issues, people like to talk about the tide gates, you know, and that because flooding down in that area. So, if, does anybody have any questions on those items?
So, just the ones marked Conservation, right?
Correct.
So, the first one I see comes up in '24.
Mm-hmm.
Yep.
And that's the 5.7 million. And then '25, we've got more tide gates.
We're being burst coming on that, that's not highlighted, so that's not What's that?
State money?
Whatever you want, it's up to you. Whatever you want, Tim.
Here, take this one.
Thank you.
It's on?
I don't know how you turn it on.
It's on.
Okay. So you're talking about fiscal year '24, our joint project, Turney Creek Riverside Tide Gates?
Yeah, I mean, I think it's a, you know, listen, I, you know, personally, I, you know, and I don't want to seem like I'm not asking questions. I know this stuff. I've been living this for years, so I know this list pretty well. But the tide gates, to me, have seemed like a pretty big deal, you know? There are a lot of concern about flooding going on throughout our town, right? Rooster River and all this stuff. But the tide gates is an issue down in that area of town. And you want to just talk a little bit about it? I think it'd be helpful.
Sure. Yeah. Like Brenda said, very important for flood control, flood mitigation, but also on the conservation side, habitat. The tidal marshes, for their overall ecological health, need salt water in and out. So, you know, on that side of things, those play an important role in the overall health of the marsh, which also holds a large volume of storm water as it migrates south to the Long Island Sound. Bucky, myself, and Bill Hurley spoke about this project earlier, earlier this week or last week on its status. It is 95%. What's the new term? Not shovel-ready? Bill has a.
Quick build.
Bill has that term.
Quick build.
Quick build.
Oh.
Quick build.
New language, huh? Oh, okay. I'll have to get up to speed on that.
So the three departments are working together on that as well as sewer. So that's very close to go, but obviously a large price tag. And to reiterate what Bucky said earlier, I think it's really important for the town, why we are kind of working on it, that to prioritize the replacement or repairs of the tide gates, at least in, you know, townwide, but also specifically under conservation's jurisdiction, is, you know, these tide gate replacements and repairs, as you see in fiscal year '25, have been on this list and were on this list prior to me even working for the town. But there's no definitive reason on why they're here. So I think the, what Bucky alluded to earlier, as far as getting an independent consultant in here with some expertise and, you know, boots in the water, structural inspections, functional analysis, timeframe, kind of a overall report card of where these structures stand in the grand scheme of things, what's their lifespan, is critical because maybe the two on here for fiscal year '25 aren't as important as some of the other 25 structures that are out there. That should be in that place. So I think it's important that we get that analysis done so we could accurately place some of these structures on this waterfall list.
Yeah, that makes sense. But how did they originally get, you don't know?
I don't know. These were on here before, like I said, before I got here. And maybe they're due. Maybe they are really important and should be addressed in fiscal year '25, if not sooner. But we, I have, and the other departments don't have any definitive data to support that prioritization.
Well, the way it was explained to me was that they were put in a long time ago, and they were, they were like designed by Tom Stanky, and like no one really knows, like, if they break, how to fix them. So I think there's a concern, concern to that. I'm sorry to say it that way. Maybe I'm saying it wrong, but that's what's described to me. And it wasn't like we bought one off the shelf and, or some engineer or somebody came in. It basically was.
In-house.
In-house, and they don't work here anymore. I think there's just a level of concern to get down there, to understand it, see what needs to be done, because obviously if something were to happen there, it would be a devastating situation for everybody in that area.
And just to piggyback on Brenda's point, they are functional. You know, there's no safety concern with them right now, but they do have a lifespan just like anything else, a vehicle or, you know, a culvert somewhere. So they are functional. We do maintain and repair them as needed, but we really, I personally really want to know what's more important, you know, based on their current condition. And we really need that evaluation.
Which are the, what are these prioritized against, I guess? What's, so you mentioned these two you're not sure about, but what are the other? I'm trying to look at the future years here. Is there something?
Well, just in my department, as it stands now, we have 14 total.
14.
And, you know, the list we've begun to generate comprehensively has, I think, in the 30s, different structures. So flap gates, duckbill gates, all different types. Some of these are mostly self-regulating tide gates, but there are other drainage structures that all the departments, you know, have their fingers on. It just happens to be that most of, most of the tide gates in my department are self-regulating tide gates and control more, they're larger and control more floodwaters between the tidal marsh.
So the 30 structures includes?
14 of kind of big ones.
And what else? I'm sorry.
There are the duckbills and the flap gates.
You want to explain where the duckbill is?
Usually smaller pipes.
Got it. Okay.
They're smaller pipes.
Do the similar function to prevent, to let water out, but not water in, so to speak. But, yeah, I think we would all agree that that type of analysis is required. I do have a record that it was done on some of the tide gates in 2016 by Ty &amp; Bond. I don't think it was a very thorough analysis, so the one we're proposing to put out to bid with in-water inspections and structural engineering is gonna be much more effective in making those decisions.
So when would that, when do we have that done and understand how it impacts the plan? Because that could have a substantial impact on the near term, right?
Absolutely. Correct. The gates that are on, that I got approval for in the previous go-round, that are on here now.
No, I mean, the study. When do you, when would the study be done?
As soon as possible. Bill.
Spring, right? Yeah. I was gonna say, maybe we hire them this, late this fall, and we have them look at it in the winter or the spring, and hopefully we could get a report by the end of spring.
Bill's working on the RFP now, correct, Bill? I don't want to put words in your mouth.
Yeah. Yeah, that inventory list, we're now 99% complete with it. I did talk to one of your maintenance workers, and our surveyor went out and confirmed a couple of sites. So we now have a list that we could give to a consultant and give them their marching orders, you know, once they provide us with a proposal. One thing I did want to highlight, and if you don't mind, is the three that are listed here, though, we, I do know, in talking to the maintenance workers and knowing from a couple of years before you got here, that these three that are listed have, are the ones that constantly give conservation problems. The guys are always out there trying to fix. I know the Salt Meadow dike, one of the doors, they always have to, they always have to adjust the door, you know, they're afraid it might fall off, and then they, they're able to Band-Aid it and hold on to it enough and keep it in repair and keep it in working condition. But, you know, that's why that one's listed, the South Benson one. I think that's a corrugated metal pipe on one of the sides, and, you know, salt water has a tendency to eat that away. And then the Riverside Tide Gate and the Turney Creek, that's one that's been on for three, three or four years now on the list. So we keep on pushing them back, but it's time that we really start addressing, addressing some of these for sure. And like you, and Bucky had mentioned, I think these belong on the list, but at least this way we'll have a priority. And if somebody says, you can get a couple more years, then maybe we push it back. If they say, oh, no, this one, you gotta move up the list, then we'll do that. But hopefully by, I would think by springtime, we would have a better feel of the condition and a set.
Thank you, Bill.
Thanks. That's helpful.
You're welcome.
Is there any other questions for Tim either on, go ahead, Jim?
Hello, everybody. Hey, hello, Bill.
Hi, Jim.
Hey, Tim.
Hey, Jim.
So on these, on these tide gates, obviously, we can't wait until a storm comes and they're broken, correct? So we gotta repair them prior to them failing, correct?
Yeah, that's correct. My crew is out there weekly or if not daily on those, you know, we make adjustments. Like when Ian was heading north from Florida, we closed those gates in precautionary measures days in advance, notify the emergency management team. Just, like I said, precautionary, no harm. Let all the water out, drain the marsh, have the capacity. But, you know, obviously, making sure that they're functioning properly is important.
Okay. I noticed on the ones, I think it was, Tim, you had talked about it, '25 or '26, the two that are there, one says repair and one says replace. The repair is like 80% more than, the repair is 80% more than the replace. So I just presume these come in all different sizes and shapes, these tidal gates, and therefore, you know, it might need to be repaired. It's just a lot more work than the one that's where we're completely replacing brand-new, correct?
Correct. And they are different sizes, significantly larger. But, you know, that gets back to my original point with this assessment is, does that repair need to be changed to a replacement? And obviously, that would change the price tag. Can a repair, is it sufficient to get by with just a repair and not a replacement? I don't know.
Yeah, I guess the other question, I guess, I'm sure you'll look into this. If it's not that much difference to just replace the whole thing, why not just do the replacement? This way, we're done with that one for a while.
Exactly.
Instead of just repairing something, something else breaking on it or wearing out. All right. Tim or Bill, if you can give me some sense, how many, because I think we've replaced or repaired some of these over the last five, six years. I thought they came up in funding requests. How many tidal gates do we have in town? Because there's four on this list that are either being repaired or replaced.
Correct. The list we've generated, Jim, I had my staff pull some old folders back to the Stanky days, the late '90s, just to, there were some preliminary inventories with some details. I got together with Bill and Bucky to kind of coordinate all this and pool our resources. I had multiple versions and renderings of this list. I had staff combine them, and we came up with, there's about 30 or so, give or take, structures, 14 of which are tide gates, you know, on the larger side that fall within conservation's umbrella, the others remaining mostly under DPW. So there's quite a bit, but I think it's probably safe to say that the 14 largest ones are gates under conservation.
Okay. And I presume that when we either, well, I would hope that when we're replacing these, we're replacing them with whatever modern technology's best plan to do that, and that we're just not sticking to Mr. Stanky's design that he came up with. Because by now, I would think that if his were so great, the rest of the world would have adopted them by now. So I would hope, or are you guys just trying to get to the same thing? I guess that's the question.
No, I mean, similar to the flap in the tank on your toilet, you know, the principle in physics, you know, maintain the same functionality. But obviously, with design by, you know, qualified engineers and consultants in the business that come up with the designs, materials, any improvements can be made, similar to what we're looking at right now on, you know, in this fiscal year with the railroad bridge, tide gates at South Pine Creek. You know, and I brought this up to Flood and Erosion Control Board during a resiliency talk, was, you know, was an improvement. Can, during the design phase, can, should we be designing for additional capacity as resiliency needs increase, as, you know, weather gets worse and worse and so on? So we're upgrading that tide gate from three flaps or tubes, SRTs, to five. You know, and that's something I want to look at, and FECB is on board with that as well. But if we're doing this now, I personally would like to at least have the conversation in the design phase that can we explore the possibility that someday we may need to regulate more water, more volume for larger storms, and should we be designing for that? So.
That's great. Now, that's, that's, okay, go ahead, Bill.
I was just gonna say, and the other thing to answer your question of, yes, your memory does serve you right. The town installed four tide gates, what we commonly call the hump by the, behind the fire training center. Two of them are self-regulating tide gates to let the water come into the marshes, as Tim mentioned before. And the other two are sluice gates where we can open, or usually we keep them closed. But if we had to open them, we can open to let the water drain, you know, in terms of storms. And that was completed about in 2019. So that was the one that you might be recalling.
So how long will it, is it gonna be, is it going to take to get these studies done so that we have more accurate numbers on the tide gate?
Springs.
Repair slash replacement?
We're hoping to get, we're hoping to get at least initial reports by the spring for cost estimates, maybe the spring or summer for that. As Tim alluded, a lot of these numbers were made by his predecessor. And so, and unfortunately, we don't have any backup from him, but it's the best that the numbers that we have right now. The other thing to remember, too, is the tide gate, you know, as you were talking about before, Tom Stanky's self-regulating tide gate, you have the balls, you have all these components of the tide gate. But also, don't forget, sometimes it involves the bulkhead or the headwall that's associated with it as well. And so you want to make sure that, you know, those are in good condition. And so the whole condition assessment will take not just the tide gate and the functionality, but the whole structure itself, including the pipes inside that feed the tide gate.
Great. I have no further conversations. Bill and Tim, thank you very much.
Thank you, Jim.
Thanks.
You're welcome.
That was helpful, actually.
Yeah, and just to expand on that, as far as the capital process, you know, that this is a good example of something that could come up in the future that, you know, when we meet again next year at this time, you know, we'll lay these out and include them in the plan and make adjustments to it, just like we'll do every year. And if there was one, if there's one on there that seemed like it was an emergency, like had to be taken care of right away, then we would come to you and ask for a request at that time.
And all the worries of that buffer.
Jared, I presume as we learn about these two, first two tide gates, it might adjust the estimates for the future ones, I presume, to some degree. At least you'll learn some stuff.
I would think so, yeah. Yeah, I, you know, we'll look at the report and, you know, what it says, if it goes into pricing, and, you know, can we extrapolate anything from that pricing and what that did to the projects that are currently on there, and whether or not that would affect the, any new ones that we put on.
Great. Thank you. I just see this as a working document going down the way. I think we can just adjust things as we go along. Thank you very much, Brendan.
Right. So, yeah, the point is, Jim, and it's good that you bring it up, you know, hopefully we get from each of our presentations over the next whatever couple of months, you know, we focus really solely on that next year to get that details out, so we understand them. We get the feedback from the group, obviously. You here, and there's give and take. We understand the public gets what are some of the challenges we're facing, right? right? And then, as Jared said, you know, we come back all the time, and we give a sort of blessing to the five-year, right, a blessing, but then we come back and we have to update it and maybe move the, you know, Jenga pieces around a little because of a report that comes in and says this needs to get done or that needs to get done, it's an urgent matter. So, I mean, I think this is going to be a good process. I'm hopeful, I'm hopeful that it will be helpful for everyone involved.
Also, to that extent, if I could, Jared and I had discussed and got our grants coordinator, Terry, involved while I was at the resiliency meeting with Senator Wang. I did mention the railroad bridge that's on for fiscal year 23 at, with a two and a quarter mil price tag. I was told that that may be, I just want to say may, qualify for, since it is, I'll use the old term, shovel-ready, that may qualify for grant funding, according to some of the CIRCA staff that were there. So, I don't want to sound too positive, but in relation to changing things on this capital plan, one of those changes could be, hey, you know, we just found some money or a lot of money to, grant funding to be applied to something that's already kind of in the works, so it could work that way as well. So, we're beginning that process to explore that grant.
That's great. I just want to say for the record, Terry, you know, I appreciate everybody's support of the budget item for Terry because she has been, look at them all. She has been so great.
Amazing.
I mean, amazing, and she's going to, I mean, ask all the department heads, they really interact with her a lot, and she's going to be, she's more than worth her weight, her salary. She's really good.
Yep.
Really good.
Yeah, Brenda, even today, she just submitted a grant today, so, just to show you. I totally agree.
She's going to save the town money, definitely. Then we'll make her full-time. We'll save even more money.
Yeah, no, I just, thank you, Tim. I really appreciate the conversation. It's helpful because, at least for me, I know we may have discussed some of these things before, and they've been on the list, but it's hard to have a full appreciation. And I think, you know, what's helpful for me is to understand on some of these things, you know, the magnitude of the risk that we have in the plan when we haven't had a study is real. And, you know, we're talking about putting aside big contingencies in our capital dollars, and the reason I think we need to do that is we have too many unknowns. As we, you know, as we, you know, do these studies and we have a better understanding of kind of the inventory of what's out there, you know, I think that's helpful and it's important. And, you know, in terms of the other things that are here, again, I know a lot of them may have been hanging around a while, but this, you know, I just found this conversation to be really helpful. So, you know, as we move on to, you know, to some of the other ones, it's, you know, it is, it's a good process and good to, you know...
Well, it's a good reminder, right? Because like the waterfall was a one-time thing, and, you know, like you say, you know, there's so many other matters that everyone's dealing with, they get lost.
Well, and I think the, yeah, just the, you know, we, when you went out 10 years, it was just so, it was very imprecise, and I think, you know, what I always saw was even the current year didn't come to pass this plan, never mind the next year, never mind five years from now. So, hopefully these things can help us, you know, get better at doing this so that we can, you know, we can evaluate our risks and plan more appropriately. So, thank you.
Good comments. Thank you. Mark, do you have any thing, any questions?
I don't, I think I want to thank everybody, Tim and Tom and Bill for their work, and Bucky for their help today. Just along Laurie's point of not having a photographic memory, would there be a possibility, I don't want to create more work for anybody, but if we could get like the backup for all of these items that's available, so we can just kind of reintroduce ourselves to them, because some of them we forget about.
Well, I think that the, probably the ones current, right, am I wrong, Jared? The 24, we have more, and some of the stuff we have less, correct?
Right. Yeah, the ones for 24 that are, you know, you can expect will come before you for a vote, we, you know, we'll, if we don't have it already, we'll have information, more information put together on those.
But what we have, we could send to the group.
Yeah, just whatever you have now.
I think so, yeah. I'll get together with the department heads.
Introduce ourselves with it so we can be, you know, a little more intelligent in how we're thinking about some of these things.
Or maybe even to follow up to Mark's point, maybe even just a designation on some of these, you know, if there is an actual, you know, how solid these numbers are, because I know in the past, and I think it was probably the first board of finance meeting I attended before I was on the board, there was a very large discussion about a project that had, you know, ballooned from like 2 million to 10 million since the last waterfall, and nobody was quite sure how the 2 million, you know, what the basis of it was. So, you know, even if some of these are wild guesses or placeholders, I think even that would be helpful to know, you know, if they're, if they're just, you know, best guesses versus they've got anything behind them. I think to Mark's, and I understand what you're saying, Jared, we don't usually get backup until it comes before us for a vote, but, you know, but, but the basis for the numbers and how they were developed, you know, like, I don't know, some of these, yeah, some of these may have been very specific, and some of these may have been, to Tim's point, just inherited from a predecessor, and we literally have no idea. And so, even that is, I think, good to know, because it just gives a, an indication of, you know, maybe the, kind of the risks in the plan.
We can do that.
Yeah, I mean, I don't expect anything on the senior center, Brenda, because that's a dream right now, right?
That's good, because you won't get one.
Some of this other stuff.
I will go take a picture of one of the nice senior centers I really like, and then that'll be my backup.
What's the one, what's the one, I went to a few years ago when my daughter was on the Ledlow Swim team, is it the new Cannon one that's right next to the pool, and they have a beautiful senior center with their outdoor pool and, yeah.
Yeah.
Either there or Darien, I can't remember which, one of those two, but, yeah.
Westports is pretty nice, too. Anyway, but yes, I think, I think the next, you know, the most recent up capital, non-recurring, we all have more information, obviously, than some of the stuff in the far-out piece.
Mark's talking, but we're not hearing him.
Oh, Mark, you're, I can't hear you. We can't hear you. Were you talking? Mark?
I don't know if he can hear us anymore.
No, it doesn't seem like he can hear us. Mark?
We can't hear you, Mark.
I could text him.
Could you? He's looking at us.
We can't hear Bill either.
I don't hear Bill either. Jerry?
I don't know what's going on. Has David muted?
No, I didn't hear anything.
You guys?
Let me let Mark know.
No, they're good.
There's the little mics there.
He's just talking away.
There's no stopping him. Clearly, he can't hear us either.
Got his cellphone.
I got it.
I just, I don't think he even looks at his cellphone.
Jared, scroll down.
Use the mouse to unmute the mics.
Yeah, go up a little bit.
To the mics.
To where the mics are. See, on the far-right upper-hand corner where the drop, or down. Yeah, scroll down to the ones that are talking and unmute them.
I, I can't see without my glasses, Jared.
Scroll down.
I don't have that.
Shouldn't it be?
I don't know why they all got muted, but...
Oh, I just muted Walsh, I think. I have no idea what I just did.
Just highlight, put the arrow over Bill's face.
They're not muted.
They're not muted. Bill and Mark are not muted.
All right, Jerry, this is you.
No, I didn't do anything.
It's Dave Kelly.
Bill's giving that filibuster like the other night.
But Bill's still talking.
We're going to be still talking!
He said we haven't heard a word.
You tell poor Bill that...
I just texted him.
Bill!
Thank you, Bill.
How do you do sign, signing for?
Maybe enter something in the chat there.
No, honey, that's like, stop talking. We need to tell him like...
This is out of air and scuba diving.
I thought you were doing this.
Can you guys, Bill, can you hear us? Mark, can you hear us?
Can anybody hear us?
Jim Walsh?
We're done.
I think the meeting's over.
That means one too long.
Oh, no, 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 we're saving the time.
All right, can you write in the chat, meeting's over?
Tell them we're going to adjourn.
So, we're having technical difficulties, meeting adjourned. Now, send any questions you have, if you have any additional questions. Who, who, Mark? If he doesn't know, what are you saying to him?
He probably got my message.
Bill is still talking. What is he saying?
He's joking, he's telling jokes.
He's telling jokes!
And he sees us all laughing, he thinks we hear him.
Oh, he's such a good-hearted guy.
All right, I think we should probably...
Okay.
Bye. We adjourned?